Shayna said that she may.
I think John needs to be unmuted.
I am now.
Okay. Is everybody in for the board that we know of with the exception of Lori? So we've got myself, John, Bill Pabola, Lori will be joining us. I know we have Shayna is on, but she's not unmuted yet. So as long as Lori gets, we can't vote anything till Lori gets here. I believe I'm unmuted now. All right, we'll be, get started here in just a second, folks. We're just getting a couple of things ironed out here. All right, before we start, let's go over a couple of ground rules that we're gonna. So our meeting progression is going to be the same as usual. We will have the same two comment periods that we have always had. The first one will take place before we vote on anything, and that is for agenda items only. So the agenda can be found on the district website if anybody wants to look it up. I think if this works, I'm also posting a link in the chat if it goes through that you can click on that'll take you to the meeting agendas and download it. So if you want to comment on something that we are going to be voting on tonight, that's what the first comment period is for. Every person who's commenting gets two minutes and that two minutes will be timed. And at the end of two minutes, somebody will let you know that it's been two minutes and you have like 30 seconds to wrap up your thoughts on whatever you're speaking about. If anybody, at that time, you know, your, your user ID will just be muted after the 30 seconds. If there's any profanity, any, anything super wildly inappropriate, then you're forfeiting your opportunity to speak. Inappropriate doesn't mean something that somebody disagrees with. It means if you wouldn't say it in a classroom full of kids, then you shouldn't say it here in the chat because we do have kids that watch and listen. I think that was it. The sheet went away that had the, the screen with the the rest of the rules. But when we get to the end, you can comment on things that were not on the agenda. Same rules, two minutes, 30 seconds to wrap up. Keep it appropriate. Like you would if your kids were in the room and everybody else's kids were in the room.
Holly, the only other thing that I would like to add is, and some of you may remember this from when we did this before. If for any reason it appears as though this meeting is being hacked, it will be shut down immediately. And, you know, I just want to mention that.
Okay, absolutely. If that were the case, then anything we don't vote on gets moved to another meeting and we call it a night. So let's not have that happen. All right, if that's everything, I guess I'll, I'll be leading this meeting tonight. While Phil's recovering from some medical things. And so I probably won't have the same finesse that Mr. Farr has, so bear with us. But with that, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start this by announcing that on September 16th, we did have an executive session for legal reasons. And with that, we'll open it up to any public comments on agenda items only. Mary Jean and Shane, did we have any in the chat?
Mr. Yuhas did put his name in the chat, but his name is not coming up as someone who's in our meeting. So I would need to know his name in order to unmute him. If you could please put that in the chat box, Mr. Yuhas, if you could put your screen name. Thank you, Mr. Yuhas. I found Galaxy No. 10. I will unmute you. Mr. Yuhas, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, I believe I am. Is that right?
You are. You have two minutes.
Okay, so this is pertaining to all things that are on the agenda tonight. This is the Board of Ten Canics Rules of Construct. In asserting the intent of the board in adopting a policy or procedure or of the administration in establishing a regulation, the following presumptions among other legal applications presumptions must be used. That neither the board nor the administration intends a result that is absurd, impossible of execution, or unreasonable. That neither the board nor the administration intends to violate federal or state constitutions or any other applicable law. If any policy or procedure or administrative regulation can be given multiple interpretations, the board and the administration intend that only constitutional and lawful interpretation shall be valid. And that neither an unconstitutional nor an unlawful interpretation was intended. So that goes along with everything that you guys may or may not try to do.
Mr. Yuhas, you're down, Mr. Yuhas, you're down to 54 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And then with this being said, obviously, I believe that I'm doing an objection, a legal objection to this meeting. Being a sunshine violation, you're welcome to continue. And if you have a solicitor, you might want to refer to him for a little bit or whatever you guys gotta do, or just continue under my objection of being an illegal meeting under the sunshine law. And I'll say, I guess I'll just finish with that and try to get back in. I won't be back in at the end, so I'll try. Do you want to go back into the chat again at the end to say I want two more minutes at the end?
Yes, there'll be a time to, to add it back in there, but I'm sure she can also add you to the list now.
Jen Brody, I'm gonna unmute you. Mrs. Brody, you should be unmuted.
Okay, I went to the TASD website, but the only thing that comes up is the Zoom for this meeting. So you can't look at what the agenda is. So how do you comment?
You go to the school board option. And then there's agendas that comes down in that dropdown menu. I will, because everybody doesn't have this, the, the agenda in front of them tonight, the way they necessarily would have in the past. We can, if there's questions, read off, there's not a huge agenda here, so we could read them off if needed. When, when we go through the vote.
Okay, well, it's hard to comment when you don't know what the agenda is.
Yeah, they're always posted, they're always posted on the district website the day before. There's a preliminary one on the, like, the Monday before a meeting. And then the Wednesday afternoon before the meeting, they post the, the full agenda, the final agenda.
Well, I just went onto the site and only the Zoom meeting part came up, like nothing else.
Okay, so can, if you scroll down. School board. And then agendas.
Okay, well, it comes up totally different than what it normally does, so that's why it was difficult to find.
Okay, no problem.
All right, but I do have a question. I know it's not on the agenda, but I couldn't see the agenda. So why is this meeting Zoom now?
It was legal advice, legal advice. Many other school districts are moving to that because of the uncertainty of the mask mandate for the general public and the lack of interest by most general public to wear a mask. So rather than having that fight with our communities, we decided to take the legal advice to move to Zoom for a period of time.
What's the strategy? Just to allow less people to voice their opinions?
This is, I'm not going to argue with you at this time. That's clearly not the case. I've said that on social media as well. It is not. Everybody still has the complete ability to make their comments as they always have. And as they did when we had almost a half of a year of Zoom meetings prior to this meeting. So.
Mrs. Brody, your time has elapsed. That was the last person that was in the chat box up until 7:40.
Okay. All right, business and finance. Do we have a motion approved, business and finance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call. Oh, is Lori in here now?
Yep. Yes, I think I saw her there. This is Bennett.
She's, she's muted, Carolyn. So we gotta get her unmuted.
Yes.
One, may I speak? Holly, did you say motion to, for one through six?
Yes, for all the items of business and finance, yep.
Yeah, so that, I just want to clarify that. I didn't hear that, so I want to make that motion, business items one through six on the agenda. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. We didn't have any committee meetings that I'm aware of. Is there anything to report on, under the committee meetings, committee reports?
No, but you skipped the superintendent's report.
All right, well, you know, we're saving the best for last, Heather. I see you only, there's only five items there. My, what I printed out skipped number one. So if you just want to, since there's only five, let's just do them. If you want to read them real quick.
Okay. Item one is to recommend that a resolution be adopted approving Kathleen M. Ferrari as a district paraprofessional, salary 1675 an hour for seven hours a day. Start date to be determined pending receipt of clearances and employment paperwork.
Want to do one at a time? Or you want to do them all?
I think that, I think just read them all and then we'll do them as.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's all right. My bad.
Number two is recommend that a resolution be adopted approving Megan Welsh as a grant funded paraprofessional to address student academic needs due to COVID-19. Position is for the 2122 school year. Salary is 1675 an hour for seven hours a day. Start date to be determined pending receipt of clearances and employment paperwork. Number three, recommend that a resolution be adopted approving extracurricular appointments for the 2122 school year as listed. Salaries to be prorated as necessary if the district's, if the district's ability to complete the year is affected by any reason. Clearance is on file as required. The first is Rich Appleby as equipment manager. The stipend is $3,257. The second is Ray Woods as the boys head wrestling coach. And that salary is $6,514. The fourth item is to recommend that a resolution be adopted approving co-curricular appointment for the 2122 school year as listed. Salary to be prorated as necessary if, if the district's ability to complete the year is affected for any reason. Clearance is on file as required. And that one is Anne DeMarco as the freshman class advisor for $543. Last one is recommend that a resolution be adopted approving volunteers for the 2122 school year as presented. Clearance is on file as indicated.
Great.
I'm asking for a motion to approve items one through five.
Motion to approve one through five.
Second.
Roll call.
This is Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. We established we didn't have any committees meet. So we're on to unfinished business. There's a, item number one, recommend that a resolution be adopted approving the second reading of the following board policies and procedures. Board policy number 146.1, trauma informed approach. And safe to say something, the administrative regulation for board policy number 805, emergency preparedness and response. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call. Well, is there any discussion? I don't think there's anything to discuss, but. Okay, roll call, sorry.
Dr. Pabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. All right, number two, a rapid COVID testing administered by a school with parent permission, a discussion on that. I don't know, Heather, do you have anything? Do you have something prepared on that or?
No, I don't. I did, I did reach out to the IU and so if you recall, there were two ways to do this. One was that you could do pool testing, which is a group of students basically do a self-test. It goes into a vial and then it, so it's not identified by student, it is identified by classroom. And right there, they're just looking to see whether or not it's present in the room. You wouldn't know who had it, but you would know that it was present in the room. And then you could test with parent permission, you could test the kids in the room. The other program that is available to us is just to have our nurses trained to do rapid tests. So in that case, if, if there was any question that a student might be positive, that with the parent permission, we could perform a rapid test here. And, and be able to tell the parents and the student. So those are the two options. When I spoke with the IU this afternoon, just as a point of information, not that it really matters, but that there are five different school districts in the IU that are taking advantage of the program. And then the IU itself, because they also run very specialized classrooms.
I believe I said this the last time. I'd like to see more information about this and especially maybe some results. I could see positives in this program, but I can also see possibly negatives with this program. I, I just think right now to have this discussion without some additional information might be a little difficult, at least for me. So.
Bill, can you help me understand specifically what you're looking for so I can go after it?
I, there's two things. Well, number one, the convenience, a child may be symptomatic. Obviously, we're doing anything here with the parent's permission, so that's understood. So there's the convenience issue, the convenience issue of like identifying the possibility, helping lower the possibility of spread. Getting a child into or out of quarantine, avoiding an unnecessary quarantine, avoiding an unnecessary interruption in the educational process for not only that student, but other students that, that possibly can be involved. The flip side of it is, we're not a medical clinic. And I want to be very clear that we don't want a child. Matt Pabola, you're not feeling well, but go ahead into school, go down and get the COVID test at the nurse's office. Then what is the level of responsibility? So I see that as the double edged sword. So I guess I'd like more information about responsibility. You know, what if, what if the COVID test is in error? I mean, it's an antigen test. We're not a medical clinic, so there's some level of responsibility. Albeit the parents are giving their permission, I just think I'd like a little bit more, I guess, clarification on responsibility, maybe a little bit of a legal issue answered, you know, in regards to moving forward on this. And then what's the experience with some of the other schools that have already started doing this?
So Heather, the only, the other thing I was gonna add to what Bill said is, what if we decided to move forward with, with one of those? I'm sort of just interested maybe in the rapid test as, as a, you know, a kid is, has something come up and then we are able to administer it, because obviously in the community, these tests are hard to get right now. And so is there availability? If we put the program in place, could we actually even do it? Because I know that supply chain for those antigen tests isn't really super solid right now. So if we knew that, that would be good. The other thing, and this is a little bit, it's, it's associated with that. I've been reading about districts that have been able to put a policy in place where they're eliminating quarantines by putting a rapid test in place. So kids that would be identified as close contacts, those schools are doing a test daily. Again, obviously with parent permission. They would do that in the morning. If they test negative, they could continue to stay in school versus going out on quarantine. So, you know, that, that's a little bit outside of the scope, but that's associated with this whole antigen rapid test.
Okay. I'll try to get more information.
My understanding would be that there's no one on the board that's interested in having a conversation about any kind of surveillance type testing. So we don't need to pursue anything with that as far as information goes. So we're looking at rapid testing as an option with parental permission, and we want to look at what it could look, what it could be for a test and stay type program. What it could look like as a symptomatic student, if the parent wants to have the child tested right on the spot. And then also.
And then also, the thing I'd been interested in before was the ability for parents that they want to have their quarantine student test on day five or whatever, that they would be able to come in and have it done as opposed to going to CBS or whatever. So I guess those are the three ways in which we would be looking at potentially using something like this, or or looking to have a discussion about considering. Okay.
Okay, I'll prepare something for the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
No motions, no further discussion on that? Okay. Item number three, recommend that a resolution be adopted approving a memorandum of understanding between the Wyoming County District Attorney's Office, the PA State Police, the Toncanic Borough and Toncanic Township Police dated eight thirty twenty twenty-one.
To approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say that it has been confirmed to from last meeting when I asked to make sure that everybody is trained. It has been confirmed, everybody is trained. Correct, Heather?
That is correct, Lori. I did confirm that.
And that was trained in like mental health responses, correct?
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke?
Yes, sorry.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, new business. First item is the T A S D visa account. It's there for people's perusal. Item number two, a summary of the Kelly Services substitute teacher fill rate is available in the agenda. Item number three, the PSBA officers election. So as is typical for PSBA, there's not really a whole lot of competition here. The rest of the board was sent information about the PSBA Pennsylvania School Board Association officer candidates. The only office that I see on there was, that was contested was the president-elect. There were two, Sabrina Backer and David Shap. As the PSBA rep for the board, my my recommendation would be that we vote for Mr. Shap from Brentwood Borough School District as the president-elect. And then approve the rest of the uncontested slate of officers. There's no other real decisions to make. There's a, I don't even know that we qualify to vote for some of them, the East Zone Representative and the Section Seven Advisor. So that would be my recommendation. Do we have a motion for that?
Holly, there is one more. Maybe you're not seeing it. It's the the steering committee, the very last one. There are four candidates and you're supposed to select three.
Uh-oh, let me see here. I must not have seen that on the paper. Oh, that's for the the school board secretaries forum, so you just get to vote on that.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Holly's recommendation.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Lou.
All right, any discussion? All right, motion to approve. Or so we got that. Let's try roll call this time.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke?
He's muted.
Okay, I'll go, I'll call him at the end. Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
This one, we may need to table if Lori has to abstain. The number, item number four is recommend that a resolution be adopted to approve bus and van contracts. We only have five members here, and if Lori abstains, then we only have four affirmatives, so we will have to push this to the next meeting.
Yep, I have to abstain.
All right, well, then moving along, item number five. And also, as we're wrapping this up, if anybody else wants to comment on non-agenda items, now's a great time to put your name in the chat box so that Mary Jean and Shane can start putting together their list of people to pull out. We are going to go by the order that they are entered in the chat box. Item number five, recommend that a resolution be adopted to approve Conrad Segal actuaries for the twenty twenty-one ACA employer reporting. Get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. And the last item under new business, a recommend, number six, recommend that a resolution be adopted approving a memorandum of understanding from September twenty twenty-one through May twenty twenty-two between T A S D in hands of Wyoming County for truancy prevention services. We get a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes. All right. The moment everybody's been waiting for, public comment on non-agenda items.
Mr. Yuhasheer is up first. Mr. Yuhasheer, you can now unmute yourself.
During my first two minutes, did anybody hear my question that I was asked before my mic got shut off?
No.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that happened to you guys, but I was asking, how does somebody have a legal objection during this meeting? And if you didn't know the answer today, you need to know it during the others, because when you guys go into your, this is not my two minutes, because you guys didn't finish, you guys didn't answer my question, because at least we need to know.
It is your two minutes, George, so keep going.
We need to know, as citizens, how do we make legal objections during a meeting? And the Zoom thing, you got to figure it out. If I raise my hand, I have to have an opportunity to have legal objections to anything you guys are saying, not just two minutes in the beginning. We have time for every action that gets taken to object. When you ask each other, anything else that is actually referring to us also?
It is not, George. Read the policy that you like to so greatly throw out there. And you can pause the timer right now, Mary Jean. If you read it, it says, we have the option to allow that that comment period at the beginning before any vote is taken on anything on all agenda items. Or we can choose to take it item by item. We choose, and it's in the sunshine law. We choose to take it at the beginning unless we have something that we have in the past called out and decided that we would hold comments on that until after we maybe had a presentation given or something, because we're going to give more information at that time. So that is not accurate.
I appreciate that. Now, listen, I appreciate that, right? So just try to keep your tone right, just so I can keep mine right with you. Now, the idea that you have it in the front end, you got to understand, there is a comment section, yes. But we also have a chance to talk on any, any official action. So unfortunately, let's say that we both disagree, that's okay. We'll let the, we'll let the higher ups determine that. So if you guys rate something to come to you and say that's a violation, then hopefully we get it fixed. Either I'm going to be wrong, or you guys.
Mr. Yuhasheer, you have about forty seconds.
You had to hold the time on this, because this is not anything I want to discuss, but we, this is about legal citizens having a right.
The part where I was speaking did not count against your two minutes, but anytime you are speaking does.
Okay, that's fine. And and this two minutes are inherent, right, to, they're actually being used to silence people, not to give them a chance to talk. That's exactly what it's being used for. So I realize now, after the last meeting, that that's what it's inherent for. So that's why I'll be using email, and all my emails will be public. You don't have to respond to my emails, but everything I'm sharing with you guys is public, which will show more willful neglect. So it's really important that you guys know that, because everything I'm doing for you guys, you're not responding. For some reason, you're going silent. You want to give people two minutes to talk during a meeting every two weeks. That's inherent to an argument and to a fight. And then you guys don't respond to any emails. So that's inherent to a fight.
You have about four seconds, Mr. Yuhasheer, four seconds.
So instead of being more afraid of your solicitor, be afraid of your citizens, who will look for resignations and abolishment, and will get charged.
At this time, we need to mute you.
Who's next?
Jen Brody, I'm going to unmute you right now.
Me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, is there, was there a vote, or is there going to be a vote on a gifted teacher?
That took place. She, that position will start on Monday.
Okay, is that position going to cover all of the grades, or is that just for high school?
No, the the position will cover all grades.
Okay.
Was there more?
There's no additional requests and public comments.
No, I talked longer this time, and I got cut off last time, so I figured I was done.
Okay, any other comments? I thought I saw Jen Higgins popped up in the chat. Let me see. Okay, yes, it was a direct message just to me, Jen Higgins.
Ms. Higgins, what is your screen name? Is it Jennifer's iPhone?
Yes, it's Jennifer's iPhone. That's what came up in my chat.
Okay, I'm going to unmute her. You should be able to speak at this time.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to get some specific answers, because for my children, it might be mixed answers. Masks, are they to be worn when they're outside at recess?
No.
Are they to be worn in the cafeteria?
Not while they're eating.
Are they able to speak in the cafeteria during lunch?
They can correct me if I'm wrong, but usually it was, you know, as long as things didn't get out of control. So, you know, for safety reasons, they didn't want the kids like really loud and rambunctious in case they needed to make an announcement or there was an emergency. But they were able to speak to each other, last I've always known.
Okay, briefly, I just want to mention, I would like to meet with the superintendent along with Shane Powers and Mr. S. about the recent bus debacle. I don't want to go into too much detail publicly, publicly, and I'm sure everybody will learn why later on afterwards. But I did want to make that point, so hopefully the superintendent will be expecting my my call, or maybe Shane Powers reached out. On a separate note, I don't believe in the success of masking all day long, so it's probably about seven hours or so that they're in these masks. But it doesn't seem like that's going to go anywhere soon. So my question is, has anybody talked about what we can do to help boost the immunity of our students? Because right now, all the anxiety and all of the all of the mental health, that is doing nothing to help boost their, and my daughter said, one of the teachers did yoga recently. I was like, oh, wow, kudos to that teacher. Has anybody talked about anything about that, putting any of that in our curriculum?
Mrs. Higgins, you have about twenty seconds.
Okay, I just asked a question, though.
Yeah, so we we previously have done a lot of activities. Pre-COVID, we were doing a lot of activities like that. And we still do maintain that at the primary level. Part of the ESRS three grant has to be used for that type of thing, and so we are actually meeting and coming up with a direction on that, and so, yes.
That was the last person. There's no one else in the chat box.
Okay, any other comments from board members tonight?
For me?
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
You.
Good night.
Good night.